All right, we're going to call or order the special meeting on December 5th, 2022. Madam Clerk.
Role call, Councilman Asville.
Present.
Councilman Buddy.
Present.
Councilman Chatelain.
Present.
Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Bodie.
Present.
Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer.
Present.
Finance Director Todd Turnion.
Present.
City Attorney Scott Stansbury absent, myself, Municipal Kirk Carey Hughes is present. Mayor's message?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. No messages evening. We can continue on.
2023 budget hearing, all departments, administration, civil service, court, fire, maintenance, police, recreation, regulatory sanitation, senior center, and streetlights.
Okay, we're not over the public hearing. You want us to come forward and discuss 2023 budget? So knowing coming forth, we're now closed public hearing, and we'll go into council discussion.
Mayor, I would like to propose that we amend the agenda to add after role call 2022 budget amendment hearing. It's just not in our agenda.
Do you want to try to amend it tonight?
I want to add it. Just add it. Amend the agenda.
Okay, Councilman Buddy has a motion on the floor to add 2022 budget amendments to the agenda. Give me a second.
Wait. We're just discussing it?
Are you going to amend it tonight?
You want to amend it or just discuss it?
I want to amend. I thought we were going to have a budget hearing on the amended 2022. Maybe not. Maybe I misunderstood. And the 2023.
I think tonight was just for the 2023 budget.
Amend the agenda. I mean, we could discuss.
No, we don't need to do it.
We can discuss it.
We don't need to. I thought that was the plan. If that's not the plan, I'm fine.
Yeah, no, so the 2022 discussion would be at the regular meeting in December.
There's no way I understood.
I think, I'm sure y'all are all correct.
Okay.
So I withdraw my proposed amendment to the agenda. Thank you.
I hope I'll discuss it by this fifth degree of ready.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, we'll move on to 2023 budget.
Who wants to talk first?
Yep, we'll go. We'll go first. Go, Todd. We have first.
I know, right?
Treat them like a shortstop. Take him, Jack.
Good evening, Council Mayor. We're here tonight just to provide some thoughts and feedback on the budget for the 2023 calendar year end for the city. Just a few brief comments on the overall process and the information that's been shared with you in advance of this meeting tonight. First, the 2023 budget does include all of the funds that the city has. So it's the city's general fund, sales tax fund, debt service fund, and capital project fund. We've added some new funds recently the city has. So we have a FEMA expense fund, the ARPA fund, and the new fire sales tax fund. We also, as we've always had, the sewer fund as well. So now the city has roughly eight, nine, or 10 funds that are included within this budget. We primarily base the budget numbers off the 2022 actual amounts with modifications for some known transactions or known activities. For example, we budgeted the fire sales tax based on the previous estimates and a full 12 months as opposed to a short period in the 2022 year. There are still probably some items that we know about for 2023 that we have not adjusted this 2023 budget for. For example, the Veolia contract was recently terminated, and that has not been considered in the 2023 budget amounts presented here to you today. Just a few other brief thoughts. I think we've budgeted for interest expense on the $2 million loan that we took out to reimburse the general fund for FEMA-related expenses. So we budgeted interest. A full year of interest is roughly $65,000, and the principal payments on that loan do not start until the 2024 year. We budgeted sales tax amounts to be flat for 2023, the general fund sales tax amounts. So we budgeted those to be flat. Again, just with the uncertainty of sales tax amounts go up and down. So we budgeted those to be flat with the 2022 year. And if that needs to be amended into 2023, we can certainly do that. We had some increases in group hospitalization, which is the health insurance for the city's employees amongst all departments. So we budgeted an increase. So we saw an increase in 2022, and we budgeted a further increase into 2023. And that renews mid-year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kerry? That renews mid-year. So we estimated what that increase might be. We'll have better information in about six or eight months when we get those renewal options. And that impacted all city departments, just as an FYI.
Todd, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Before you get too far ahead.
Sure.
The budgeted interest that you discussed that doesn't actually, the principal payments start until 2024, was that for the FEMA loan, you said?
That's the $2 million loan that we took out. Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Will the interest expense start in '23 or just?
Yes. $65,000 is budgeted. 2022 is about $45,000 because we took some drawdowns mid-year in '22. But the '23 portion is a full year, roughly $65,000.
The '22 portion is in '23's budget or is it amended '22's budget?
No. That's the amended '22.
Gotcha.
Two of the drawdowns in '22 did not happen until several months into 2022. I think the latest one was in June. So that's why it'll be less interest in 2022.
Let me just, Todd, if we get some earlier FEMA payments, some earlier FEMA money, will we be able to, and we pay it a little quicker than before, will it change that figure or will it's pretty certain?
Well, that's if you and/or the council, what you decide to do with those FEMA funds. I mean, you may decide to pay off the, you know, pay the general fund back and pay the note off, you know, or the city could decide to use those funds, you know, for other projects.
So we got a little bit of good news. That's some PWs being in the process.
Yeah.
We heard that before.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've heard that plenty times.
Couple other thoughts, just as I kind of flip through. The budget for the fire department was primarily provided by the fire chief. So we thank the fire chief for his feedback and the information that he prepared for the 2023 budget. Sanitation and garbage, we have increases which were effective in 2022, but we carry those increases through to the 2023 year on a full-year basis. That's on the expense side and the revenue side, the fees, garbage fees on the water bill as well. Recreation saw an increase in 2022 and then 2023, slight increase projecting just in continued recovery from COVID and the inability to use, you know, use the recreational facilities during COVID and then after Ivan, Ida impact. Regulatory, we budgeted a continued increase, a slight increase in some of the building permits and fees, which those have increased again post-COVID as well. In the court department, we budgeted an increase in ticket fines revenue, fairly consistent with where we were in the 2019 and 2020 years. We've had a decrease in the court fines revenue the last few years. So we budgeted perhaps an increase in that line item for the 2023 year. And then we did pay off the outstanding bonds earlier this year, a month or two ago. And so there's no bond principal payments on the 2016 bonds, no principal or interest payments on those bonds in the 2023 budget. In fact, that fund will be closed down in the 2022 year. Again, on the sales tax fund, budgeted no change in 2023 compared to the 2022 budget. On the fire sales tax fund, again, we have a full year budgeted, 12 months at the original amount, 62.5 per month. That was, you know, initially budgeted. FEMA fund, we have no amounts budgeted, frankly, because we don't know exactly when we'll receive funds and/or what expenses, you know, may come up that'll be FEMA-related. So currently, there's no amounts budgeted there. Same with the ARPA fund. We know the council may, you've had a number of questions on the ARPA fund, how we can use those funds. I've done some initial research, and I've requested some feedback from our auditors on really how we can use those funds and what recommendations we may be able to provide to you related to that.
On the ARPA fund, I was under the impression that we've received the full $3.4 million, but that's not reflected. Do?
We have. So that's, so we have received it. It's cash in the bank. It's not revenue until we spend it. So the ARPA.
But the ARPA fund, the new fund, doesn't reflect that money?
No. No.
Doesn't reflect, receipt of it or balance?
Well, it's in the fund balance because it's, well, actually, it's not because it's cash and there's deferred revenue. Basically, that deferred revenue is a liability and obligation for us to obligate those funds and to spend that money. And we haven't done that yet. So once we spend the money, we'll recognize revenue dollar for dollar, and that's when it'll flow through the ARPA fund.
It's not going to show up until we.
Yeah, why do we do it?
I mean.
Why do we do it like that? It's just a general question that I don't understand why we do the deferred revenue like that.
So because basically, under the governmental reporting requirements, it's, we're not able to.
Is it because it wouldn't be balanced at that time?
No, it's just that it's not, it doesn't meet the definition of revenue. It's a cash receipt. It's a deposit. But the revenue is not earned until we spend it. Basically, if we never would spend the money, we would have to give it back. That's generally, I think, at a high level.
Don't spend it.
You know, and there are certain spending requirements that we need to comply with.
So it seems as though, what are, let me make sure. So it seems as though we've already spent ARPA funds this year, where it says projected through November through December. What are those for?
That's the sewer station improvements that y'all approved at the previous meeting.
Was approved or?
Or first reading.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah. That's what that is. So that's all we had, just some general comments on the 2023 budget. Again, I appreciate the fire chief for his feedback and giving us some information, as well as others within the city, Kerry and some of her team here in City Hall and others. So, Mayor, if I missed anything, please let me know. Council members, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the December meeting, regular meeting, when we're ready to start, consider this for passage, are we going to have updated numbers for the Veolia cancellation and some of those capital funds that we spent at the last meeting last week?
Capital schedule certainly. On Veolia, we can work with the mayor to have some projections and some cost savings for you, yes. I'm not certain that if the budget will be amended or not. And I don't know if that qualifies as a substantial change or not, if that'll meet that definition. But we can certainly have some information for the council to consider.
And I'm trying to get you to the cost analysis that y'all requested. I don't know if I'll have it by that time, but I'm working on it. It's kind of still, we're working on it. I'll try.
Okay. I mean, yeah, okay.
So the fire department budget is submitted by Todd St. Seer?
Yes.
I have, you know, a series of questions that, you know, I can discuss tonight or defer them to a meeting. The biggest item that I don't fully understand is when we went through the amendment of the 2022 budget, which allowed us to implement the raises, schedules, I guess very similar, if not exactly, to the ones, I guess, Todd provided for tonight. We were going to have a net revenue, I recall, of about $750,000 projected from the sales tax. And as I recall, and I haven't scrubbed my notes from, what was it, four months ago, five months ago, we were going to have a little bit more than 50% of it consumed by the raises, and a little less than 50% was going to go into a capital fund. And I'm not seeing that in these budget amendments. I'm seeing something significantly different. So I don't know what the change is.
So it wouldn't have been 750 for 2022. That would have been an annual.
No, that would have, for 2023, you had, you presented Todd for us.
That's correct.
A short year and then a full year.
We have fortunately recognized a pretty big or significant amount more than we projected.
It's not showing up in the budget, though.
Not yet. I don't know how Todd did that.
That's for 2022.
2022.
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Todd.
So to go to 2022, which I put away since we were going to discuss that, I'm projecting that we would have fund expenses from that of $233,672?
That's 2022. Yep.
Okay, I'm projecting that we would have 233 of that, and that we would actually leave in the fund $435,531.45.
No, but that total was a full year, 750.
That's what we've got. We did a five-month projection of revenue.
Five-month projection of revenue would have been about $360,000.
We had a six-month projection of expenditures.
Yes.
On five months of revenue.
Right.
And so what it looks like it's going to land at is using 233,672 in the budget and still having 435,531. So actually, the five-month revenue would amount to about 761.
Okay. If we could, because the 2022 number, really not discussing right now, and that'll shake out. I'm looking at the 2023 numbers.
And. So 2023, we would anticipate in fire sales tax to use in the regular budget about $706,000?
Yeah, and that's what's throwing me off. Because we're budgeting to get a net of 750.
So I know that's the number that Todd has. That's not the number that I have. That's not where I think they're going to be. And I think Todd would probably stand behind me on this. That's what we originally projected at 62.5 per month.
Yes.
I don't think we're ever going to get that. I think we're going to be way more than that. If you projected at 75,000, it would generate 900,000. Okay?
Let's assume for a minute.
75,000 is going to be very conservative, Councilman. I think it's going to be more like 100,000.
It is going to be what it is. But what, my big question is, five months ago.
Right.
When we amended the budget.
Correct.
To recognize the sales tax revenue and to spend a portion of it.
Correct.
We were talking about having about 50% of the fund, less than 50% of the funds going into a capital fund.
That's correct.
And all we're putting into the capital fund in this budget that I'm looking at.
You're looking at what's coming out of the general fund, not what would be actually in the fund itself. And Todd, maybe you'll explain that to me.
Maybe, but we're only transferring out to the capital.
We're not going to transfer out through the general fund, correct. The only thing that we're budgeting for in 2023 is the purchase of a ladder truck, the first payment for the purchase of a ladder truck of about 50.
Yeah, it was 40 to 50,000.
55.
Something like that. But I'm looking at, I'm looking at line.
So there's no.
691. If we, if everybody could turn the line, 691. Column M, it shows us with this proposed budget for 2023, it shows us putting $43,954 in the capital fund. Now, I know, I think we're accounting for the 55,000, whatever the lease payments, as an operating expense. I think it would be cleaner if we took that money out of the capital fund, transferred it. I mean, it's a lease purchase, right? It's capital acquisition. I don't know if the rules for governmental accounting are different from general accepted accounting. But theoretically, that money is coming out of the capital fund.
Correct.
The available capital.
Correct.
So if that's 55 or 60, the numbers in here, and this is 43, that's $100,000.
I don't know how, Todd, maybe you'll explain how we derive that column in at 43.
It's almost, it's not a plug, but it's net of 750 going in.
That's probably 750.
Right. And then, and then, and then 706 going to the general fund, transfer to fire department budget.
See, I don't necessarily agree with that 43,000 dollar number. Okay, I don't believe that for one second.
But it would have, under my theory of, if we collected more than the 750 net that we quote worked with five months ago, that would give us more money going to the capital fund.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But according to this, we're only adding in 2023, at 750, we're only adding 100,000. We should be adding somewhere near 325,000.
It would have been around 230 based on our numbers from where we were at the end of last year. We're going to be actually above that by the time the year's ended.
I'm not making myself clear, I'm afraid. I'm having a hard time saying what I'm thinking.
So when you and I met, when you and I met, we talked about that money coming through the general fund to pay for the fire truck.
That's one way to do it. But it came out of the avail, it didn't come out of the portion that was allocated to salaries.
Correct.
And direct costs, salary-related costs.
We had to move that money into, as a revenue source, the general fund.
My point being, Todd, that we had projected something less than 400,000.
Correct.
For an annual cost of the raises.
Correct.
And the related, direct labor-related expenses that increased as a result of salaries. So we're transferring here to the general budget.
We also did, I had talked to the mayor, we also hired a few additional people that were not in the face. They're a great man.
That's two people over the budget. Okay. So here's my problem. When I voted for this five months ago, six, five months ago, I was assuming that we were going to add about $350,000 a year minimum to the capital fund.
And we will.
Well, we're spending it before we get it.
No, we're not.
Well, sure, we own this budget. We're spending it before we get it.
And I would argue, Councilman, that we're going to far exceed the 62.5 per month. We're going to far exceed that. We had that discussion before.
And I hope we do.
We had the same argument in my office.
We did.
And when I said.
But we budgeted a number, and what, okay, if we're going to far exceed it.
Let's put $400,000 into the capital fund. We're going to have to do that. We're going to put 400,000, or we should put 400,000 from 2022 in the capital fund. There'll be a $400,000 surplus.
So the separate fund for the fire sales tax, we expect will have 435,000 at the end of 2022.
Correct.
It'll be in the fire fund. It won't be in capital. And that's.
Yeah, the fire fund, which is, oh, go ahead.
And that's primarily a function of the outsized receipts over the last few months.
The sales tax collection issue.
Which we don't expect to collect at the same rate, Councilman. That will.
It will decrease.
It will decrease.
Correct.
A lot.
A lot, yes.
It's going to decrease a lot from what it was last month.
But I don't want to sidetrack.
Decrease by.
I understand.
At least half or more.
I understand the line item 698, column H. Understand that. And hopefully, that number sticks with Harry here. And it met. I'm talking about 2023. In 2023, according to column M, and knowing that we already have 60,000 of the sales tax money in the general budget for, I guess, a year of lease payments, we're only adding to quote capital in the amount of about $100,000. When I was of the understanding, we were going to have 300,000 to 400,000 going into a capital fund every year, minimum. So if we're going to collect more than this.
That's how that sheet says that we talked about and that I made up for you. It wasn't 300,000 to 400,000. It was 233,000.
Your spreadsheet of capital expenditure showed that amount of revenue, as I recall. You did a 20-year or 25-year projection?
It was about 233,000 additional going into capital, plus the truck.
Plus the truck.
Originally, the first year, the first year, you had 90,000. First year, you had 90,000. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
And D, you had right at 300,000.
The first year was low because it wasn't a full year. We did six months of raises out of five months of projected revenue. I don't know if I have the spreadsheet here. But we're underfunding capital. So we're overspending somewhere else.
I don't think that we are.
Well, I'm looking at our budget, Todd. I'm looking at this proposed budget. I don't know what else to say. I know we may collect more. We may collect less. 2023. One second, Todd. I'll find.
We don't transfer funds to capital from that fund shortly and start spending money by the end of 2023. We don't transfer funds to capital from that fund shortly and start spending money by the end of twenty twenty three. I promise you, we'll have eight hundred thousand in that capital.
All right.
Minimum, no, it's not minimum. Six hundred and something minimum, six hundred and fifty minimum.
Anyway. In twenty twenty three.
I'm looking at the the twenty five year capital project projection that Todd sent back in June, right before we passed that amended budget proposal.
I don't have that, thank you.
The. Projected transfer to capital for twenty twenty three, a hundred and ninety four thousand.
Well, I've got one here that, and it's one that I. This is one I amended, let's go to. I I added some additional columns to what Todd sent. Before. Projected capital, here's one Todd prepared at your schedule, we were going to transfer two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars of transfer to capital. In twenty twenty three, plus, we were going to spend fifty four thousand.
Correct.
In lease payments.
Correct.
So the total quote capital funds would have been two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
Do you have a date on that?
I don't know, I've got the schedule Todd gave me. I don't think it's got a date, Councilman. But I've got, I've got two or three copies of it.
It's old, it's old, yet paper's turning yellow.
That paper was yellow when it was printed.
So he wants a new ream of legal sized paper in his bunch, it'll be white legal size.
I like the yellow paper, it makes the black stand out better.
So I I took and created a spreadsheet, moved some numbers around for me.
So we also had expenditures that were going to come out of twenty twenty three on that schedule that would have been to buy vehicles. Which, if you remember, we borrowed a hundred thousand from this year's capital for vehicles. And in twenty twenty two's amended budget, we pay that back.
Yeah.
Already.
Yeah. Yeah, I take, I stand corrected, in twenty twenty three, on Todd, on your schedule, we were going to spend fifty four thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars on a lease purchase.
Correct.
That's the latter.
For the ladder truck.
Correct.
We were going to spend eighty thousand dollars on vehicles.
Correct.
So now we're up to a hundred and thirty four, and we were going to transfer to capital two hundred and twenty one. So one thirty four and two twenty one is five, is three hundred fifty five thousand dollars. In twenty twenty three, for either going to the capital fund or for capital type items.
Right.
So we're not, we're nowhere near that, we're at a, we're at a hundred grand with this, with this budget.
Now, we did hire two people, I mean, that adds a hundred, about a hundred and twenty thousand.
Then we're. We hired two people without budget authorization. I don't want to, this capital fund was important to me when we voted on all of this, the men got.
Very important to me, Councilman, I've been working on it for thirty years.
I understand it.
I get it.
But but now there's been a change, and we've just effectively reduced the amount going into capital. The money's got to come from somewhere else. The the understanding was, we had raises, substantial, well earned raises, and we had money going in the capital.
And what I'm saying is, when we, and I recognized, and I talked to the mayor about it, when I recognized that the number that we were estimating was going to be substantially lower than what the actuals were going to be. We talked about bringing in more people now because that's a serious need of ours, and that's what we did.
But the the budget addressed your staffing needs. The budget we adopted, the amendment, in, was it July, I believe, that addressed staffing needs.
Some, some. I mean, look, I mean, I would, I'd like to hire another twelve people, but we know we can't because of budget, but.
I I don't.
Stay somewhat reasonable with what we know we're going to have, and still be able to fund.
Except the money is coming out of today with what we know today, not with what you expectations are. But but based upon what we're budgeting, we're we're adding personnel at the expense of the capital fund. And I'm not in agreement with that, I don't, I can't justify.
And I don't think that we are, but I mean, that's.
I'm looking at the budget as it stands.
Yes, these these numbers, I don't agree with these numbers, Councilman.
I I appreciate that, and I hear you, and you're optimistic, and I'm and I'm happy for that. But but the capital fund is is not going to materialize unless we get a lot more money. And even even then. I mean, this budget, I think, must reflect the two two additional employees? I don't know, Todd.
Yes.
So, so, so instead of four hundred thousand going to fund raises and associated costs and personnel, we're now taking seven hundred thousand. So we just took another three hundred grand, more than we were talking about.
Well, it didn't, it didn't only go into that, I mean, we increased a few of the other line, go ahead.
Working off of the same sheet you're looking at, your capital balance at the end of twenty twenty three would have been forty thousand three hundred and twenty six dollars.
Right.
Okay? The transfer out to capital, which would be unencumbered in capital, is going to be forty three thousand.
Yeah, but Councilman Azbala, you're taking a larger starting balance, project that out twenty five years. With these numbers, without assuming more sales tax, you're using the, I'm going to call it windfall in twenty twenty two.
Mr. Buddy, I'm using the sheet that you have in front of you.
Correct, what was your beginning balance on that sheet? On that sheet, the beginning balance in capital was. Eighty eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
And now you've got four hundred thousand because of some, we know there's some fluke in the sales tax.
I don't have a beginning balance on this sheet.
Well.
Or maybe I'm not seeing it.
Compute it, you can compute it, and that's why I added some columns to another spreadsheet. But if you take the revenue in, projected for twenty twenty two, and expenses.
But on your sheet, you've have, you have twenty three expenses that are actually twenty two expenses. So you got to take out that.
I'm sorry.
You have to take out those two vehicles, those two eighty thousand.
They're on the twenty twenty three budget. They got to be repaid, that eighty thousand.
It came from twenty twenty, we've repaid that with twenty twenty two.
It's twenty two revenue.
When did, when did that get repaid?
As soon as this proposed amended budget.
As soon as the amended budget is.
For twenty twenty two is approved, it repays that hundred thousand plus.
So where's that money coming from? Where, the council's going to increase your budget.
From revenue from the sales tax, actual revenue.
Cash in the bank.
Okay.
Right now, we're going to have at the, as of January eighteenth.
We've got a fluke in twenty twenty two.
But I'm telling you, the fluke is going to continue beyond, not not at the rate that it is now.
You know, in a month or two, we'll know that, but when you hire people, you're committing the city.
I'm I'm looking at, I'm looking at the numbers and where they're coming from, Councilman, and I'm convinced one hundred percent that our revenue is not going to be sixty two five a year, it's going to be closer to a hundred thousand a year on a regular, consistent basis.
And and I hope you're right. But we're spending that money before we see it, before before the finance director.
But we're not actually spending it, I know that you want to put it in the bank, and we're going to have the money going in the bank.
I tell you, we're hiring people ahead of it happening, ahead of any, ahead of seeing it happen.
I I get it.
And I think that's wrong, I just think it's wrong, and it's not in the spirit of what we talked about for the capital budget.
But originally, when we talked about this whole tax, sales tax, I mean, we looked at hiring eight employees. So I mean, it was originally figured in our original numbers to hire eight employees, you hired six, seven?
We hired a total of, well, we were at four people push sale, we would be at six people push sale, one person short. So we hired five, six, actually, with all those training, the new fire prevention.
When we met back in early July, how many people did you include? New, new, new personnel in your, in your employee count for the fire department? Because that's what we talked about.
Originally, with that budget, would have been three additional firefighters. And then, which at the time, we still had Miss Rena. So actually, we didn't have to come out of this fund totally for the other two people that we hired, we had Miss Rena's salary for eighty percent of it. Uh, it was really, we hired, we put on one additional person. And some of the line items, if you look, in small equipment and vehicle repair and maintenance, are much increased over what they were in the twenty, my original twenty twenty three. It's just been cost, I mean, that's what it's been taken to take care of the truck. And you know, we're putting a little bit more money in small equipment to be able to buy some equipment. I'm also going to ask in the twenty twenty three budget, that you will buy four hundred thousand towards capital for us to go and do some equipment needs, which I've provided a list. And we don't have to do it all in January, I mean, that could be something that we work out over, of course, and most certainly, if we're patient enough to wait.
I wonder what this wish list was right now.
And see. Uh, even with that, even with that expenditure, you'll still land, in my opinion, with a four hundred thousand dollar surplus in capital or in the fire fund at the end of twenty twenty three.
So so in twenty twenty four, on your schedule, you did have. Eighty thousand dollars for the station truck, and I think that repairs and refurbishment, no, that's the purchase trucks.
Purchase.
Eighty, fifty thousand dollars.
Pickup truck next year.
Fifty thousand dollars for refurb, but this is all in eighty four, not in, not in, in, I mean, twenty four, not in twenty three. Twenty thousand dollars for medical equipment, seventy three thousand dollars for firefighting, forty thousand for rescue. So these, this schedule was prepared five months ago.
Correct.
So instead of doing it in twenty four, you want to do in twenty three, and you want to do more.
Correct.
The whole purpose of this fund and this, and and following the discipline of a plan, is you do it according to the plan. You spend the money.
Also, we also receive additional revenue that will more than cover the cost of what we're trying to do and still lead us on the path of where we're wanting to go. Now, Councilman, I can stay on that schedule, but I'd sure hate to to not move forward and not do some of these things and have that money sitting in the bank and we need it. It'd be a shame to have eight hundred thousand dollars sitting in the bank and have a guy need a radio that's in a fire that doesn't have one. And he can't communicate with incident command and something happens because we decided that we wanted to have that account booked up.
No, just to live with your plan, Todd, your plan is just five months ago.
I think I'm more than delivering the plan. I think I'm more than.
I hear you, sir, and and I know what you're saying, and I and I understand clearly what you're saying, I just, I disagree with you. And and my understanding is just.
I think we're more than delivering the plan and are still being conservative.
I appreciate, I appreciate you saying.
The fear is, some of that money could go back.
Not, okay, so.
Unlikely, a little piece.
We met with with.
Rupert.
Yeah, Mr. Rupert. And he did bring up the possibility that some, he said he had had some applications, that you'd return some, it's not sizable.
Agreed.
He's told us not to expect sizable, it's nothing that we would have to go back to anything that we had banked, they would take from the money from that month. And he says, don't look for it to affect it greatly at all, he says, just don't count on that being affected by that.
Agreed, but it's still in the back of our head.
And and the revenue.
I understand that, and I think.
The collection's going to be lower than it was, do we have any idea how much more?
I mean, it's going to be lower by a hundred and thirty thousand.
On a what?
Coming soon, I mean, I'm hoping that we get another two, I mean, I'm praying that we get another two hundred thousand dollar month next month, that'd be great. However.
You're going to get more than that.
And it and very well may, if they haven't corrected some of the things that I thought they would have corrected before the last collection. We've been anticipating that two hundred and thirty six in the last collection, it's great that it came in. But I still think that when it lands, if you look at the numbers and you read the sheets and you see where the money's coming from, and at the rate that it's coming in.
So.
A hundred thousand is waiting on it.
So having said that. If if we collect more money going forward than than was projected and used in two thousand, I'm twenty twenty two budget amendment. I'm I'm hearing that your your plan is just is to spend it.
I don't plan on, no, I I'd love to have a.
I mean, that's what you would like to do, that's what you would.
I mean, right now, with the with the abundance of money, and I think that we're. We've been a fairly, and 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 this is not a knock on this council or this mayor in any way, shape, or form, it may be more of a knock on myself that it's taken me thirty years to convince the council, the mayor, and the people of Harrah here that we've needed these funds and be able to get it on the ballot at a rate that would support what we're trying to do.
Nobody disagrees with the the need.
What what I'm saying is, is we've been grossly underfunded with equipment, we've been working with equipment that's thirty and forty five years old. This three hundred and something thousand is just breaking the ice. I mean, I could spend a million tomorrow if I had it. And not unreasonable, it'd be all things that you would say, okay, that makes us better tomorrow. This is a conservative list, this doesn't do everything that we need to do, but it's something that we've been desperately waiting for for thirty years. We recognize that the funds are in the bank now, and most certainly at January eighteenth, when we receive our fifth payment for twenty twenty two, we're going to recognize that there's four hundred and thirty five thousand dollars sitting there. I would bet my life, I'll I'll bet my career on it, I'll retire at the end of twenty twenty three if it doesn't come in at a rate of a hundred thousand dollars a month. However. We're going to be recognizing another four hundred thousand sitting in capital at the end of the year, even with the expenses, expenses.
Another four hundred thousand over what amount? What would you?
I I would say that our surplus in the fire fund balance is going to be four hundred, four hundred thousand or close to four hundred thousand at the end of twenty twenty three.
If we utilize all of the money we've collected.
If we utilize the three hundred and eighty four thousand that I'm requesting in this, you'll still have four hundred thousand sitting in capital at the end of twenty twenty three.
And Todd, I understand your point, I I don't need money sitting in capital if I need equipment, I understand your point.
Right. I mean, that's that's.
It's the whole purpose of banking that money is so you can buy trucks.
And I think that we will, I think we're still going to be able to bank at a rate even higher than what we projected.
So, and and that may happen, and I hope it does, but that's assuming a couple of things. And and the assumptions may happen, that's assuming that the city doesn't have to return any substantial amount of money on the sales tax collection issue. And that's assuming we hit the higher revenue projections that you believe fully are going to happen. But we're spending the money now, we're going to be spending it in twenty twenty three.
We wouldn't be spending anything that's not in the bank already.
Well.
I'm not, I I wouldn't propose that we go out and make any large purchases that we don't already have the funds for. I mean, I did ask to to borrow the hundred thousand last year out of capital, and I appreciate that 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 was granted, and we were able to do what we needed to do. That has already been paid back, or most certainly, if you.
It's when we amended budget.
Adopt our twenty twenty two proposal, that would be paid back. And I wouldn't propose that we go out and make a four hundred thousand dollars worth of purchases in equipment if the money wasn't there to cover it. I'm not saying, hey, give that to us, and then if the projections come in, that'll be covered. That's going to be money that's sitting there along with continuing to fulfill more than what you expected in the twenty twenty three capital budget surplus.
On the same note, you could make half this purchase at a time.
It's it's going to, Councilman, in today's world, it's going to take me six to eight months to make these purchases, this isn't going to come in overnight, this kind of stuff. I, look, this is the pricing that I have today, I'm going to jump up and down on some salesman's feet to try to get them to give me even better pricing than what they've given me already. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we're not even going to spend this. This is what I'm projecting, this is if I go based on some of the estimates that they've given me, but I'm expecting to spend hopefully less than this. I'm not, I mean, this is my proposal, this is to give us an idea of what we're looking at. But I would think that it's going to actually be a little bit. a little bit less than this. Maybe not much. Hopefully by the time we go to spend, it won't be more. I mean, I wanted to, look, I, I know it was crazy, but I wanted to commit to the ladder truck last year. Right? I, I wanted to, as soon as we pass that budget, commit to that ladder truck, sign the paperwork. We didn't owe a payment for a full year. It's cost us a hundred thousand dollars on that truck because we didn't. But I wasn't about to come to this council one more time saying, hey, we gotta do this and make y'all feel like we gotta rush into something. But waiting until we saw the revenue and waiting until it was physically in the bank to make that move actually costs us a hundred thousand dollars. So. And I, I can show you the quotes to back that statement up.
I mean, we all, we've all seen hyperinflation, and.
And, and that's exactly, they, they also no longer giving, and if we'd have done it when I wanted to do it, but again, I, I refuse to, to, to submit it, we would have gotten a, a, a prepayment discount that they no longer offer. And that was substantial.
On the lease purchase that you're currently looking at for that ladder truck, is the annual payment? Do you know I'm not?
I, I do, councilman. I did not put that paper in front of me. It's gonna be a hundred.
Hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty?
Yeah.
We have a hundred and twenty-four thousand in your schedule.
Right. That's, that's, it's, it may be a little bit more than that now.
Yeah, and, and maybe a little bit less, cuz you were probably conservative when you put this together.
No, I, I put the exact number. I, I knew what that number was at that time.
So anyway, um, we're, we're repeating ourselves. I, I don't wanna see us neglect to put money aside that we can, that finance director buys and that is concerned. And I hope everything you're saying is correct, Todd. It's the best thing that could happen to us in the department. But I am, I am very.
And I understand the position that, that, that Mr. Tooney on has to take, and I think he does a great job at what he does. But I bet you, in his belly right now, he's agreeing with everything I'm saying.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna expect.
He, he won't admit it, but he is.
I think, I think he's disagreeing.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I'm not gonna try to guess what's going on inside of Todd.
But I hope you're right. Hundred thousand a month, I hope you're right.
Yes, absolutely.
That's where we'll be.
Absolutely. So again, I'm.
I mean, e- e- even if it's not, even if it's ninety, even if it's seventy-five, we're solid.
Mayor, you've authorized two employees without the standing in the county.
Really, one and, one and a, one and a, less than a quarter, man. We.
Well, but it's the difference.
We, we covered some numbers that we were overspending in the budget and small equipment and.
But we're allocating four hundred, three hundred thousand dollars more than we discussed five months ago. So there's three hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand of which are sixty is the lease payments on the ladder truck.
Correct.
That's accounted for. The remainder is not accounted for in my mind. I don't know what we're spending it on. If it's not personnel, I don't know, it's, it increases in, in your budget.
I have the comparison. If you look at the twenty twenty-two.
Well, I went down, I went down through the line items and, and marked them. I can identify what they are. Um, but it, again, we're spending the money in an operating budget at a rate of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars a year more.
Well, there was twenty thousand in polling expenses that I just, I knew we would have polling expenses. I just hadn't seen them and didn't account for them in my budget. And I thought it only right to put it in our budget, which it would have, whether I liked it or not, it was gonna be there. But it's, it's in the budget that I do. Um, I mean, that's, that's almost twenty thousand. There was twenty-five thousand more in vehicle repair and, and maintenance. Um, it was a bad year for our trucks, and they're only, the other ones are only getting.
But let me, let me put to you, sir, that you've got one new truck right now, and it's gonna take maintenance, but significantly less.
Correct.
We're talking about getting another new truck. So you're.
If we order that truck tomorrow, it's gonna be, right now estimated, right now estimated at thirty-six months before we receive it.
Thirty-six months.
Thirty-six. So we're three years away from losing the expense of keeping that other truck in service. And if we don't refurbish our reserve pump sometime in the near future, we won't have one.
So if we're thirty-six months out from getting it, why are we budgeting lease payments in twenty twenty-three?
Because if we order it after the budget is approved, then we'll have one payment. We'll have one payment during next year.
One payment of?
Of fifty-four thousand. Correct.
Well, no, you're not gonna make a payment.
Yeah, payments start upon.
Once the budget is approved, councilman, I would, I would hope that the mayor would authorize the, the.
Financing agreement.
Yep.
How are you paying the, the, the supplier? When's, when's the, the manufacturer?
When you place the order, you pay that first lease payment.
When you, when you place the order, you make your first lease payment one year after the order's placed. So you actually start paying for the truck before you receive it.
We're leasing, we're, the, the manufacturer's providing the, the financing?
No, we're going through, um, oh, I don't have the name of the company, but it's a, a state-approved, and it's on state contract, the truck. Um, we used to use leasing two, you remember that?
I don't remember the name.
We used to use leasing two, and now it's gonna be, we found a place to save money on fees and expenses.
So we're.
You're making a payment before you have the truck?
Correct. You'll make, you'll make, well, if it's thirty-six, you're gonna make, you're gonna wind up making a smaller payment plus two payments before you receive the truck. But nobody's gonna build you a, a million and three without putting some money in the middle for what they have invested into it.
So we're gonna borrow that money from the lease lending company.
Correct.
To make those payments.
Correct.
And, and I know, I'm not expecting you to know what those numbers are at the top yet.
I think they went up a little bit, to be honest. I mean, all.
Well, financing costs.
All financing.
Yeah, financing costs have gone on, and, and, uh, equipment costs have gone on. And originally here, uh, last five months ago, we were talking about, I think, a fifteen year payment schedule. Is that what you're still talking about?
Yes, I do believe.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that would necessarily change.
Yeah.
Anyway, from my perspective, we're spending, we're, we're adding personnel that wasn't discussed. So I'm, I'm completely caught off guard by that. And I don't appreciate.
I disagree with you. I think that was discussed.
The, what was discussed were the personnel that we approved that we budgeted for in the amended budget. And now, if we've added those personnel, we discussed it. If we're added more personnel, we have not discussed it. Cuz I, I'm gonna tell you, I haven't discussed it. Other parties may have. All I discussed was what we, was the personnel that were in the budget amendment in July of twenty twenty-three.
So you probably only have one new person since one and a quarter.
One and a quarter.
Then, then I don't know why we're moving.
And I replaced her with a firefighter, and it cost a little bit more for the firefighter. And then one other employee. Um, and to be honest, if we recognize, I mean, I'd like to fill that third shift with its six employee at some point next year, if we recognize that the revenue is coming in at the rate that I think it will be.
So, so regardless about whether it has been one and a quarter employee added over what we approved and was funded in July, we're moving seven hundred thousand dollars to the operating account, of which about sixty is, is accounted for as capital. So we're moving six hundred and forty thousand dollars to the operating account. Whereas this time a year ago, we were talking about around three fifty to maybe four hundred. So we're moving hundreds of thousand dollars more to operating. And there's been no intermittent discussion with the council. There may have been intermittent discussion with individuals. So I don't know, I don't know where we're going and what the logic is. It's a lack of discipline from my perspective. I understand that the, your desire to.
Councilman, councilman, I, I appreciate what you're saying. If you go back and look at the history of my thirty years of handling the fire department's budget, you're gonna find that I'm the only department that doesn't overspend and have been for thirty years the only department that doesn't overspend. That will continue. I am quite confident that we're gonna live within the budget that I proposed. I'm just saying, though, you, you're calling me undisciplined when I've been the most disciplined department in the city.
This is, if, if it's you that's driving the train, and Todd, you are undisciplined because five months ago, we had a plan. And this plan's significantly different.
And I still have a plan, and I'm gonna live within that plan at an even better rate.
I mean, we're, we're repeating ourselves. I don't have anything else to say about this, Todd. And I've heard you, and I understand what you're saying. So on the twenty-three budget, um, we have, if I'm reading this right, on line one nineteen, we have zero budgeted for a parade expense in twenty twenty-three. Mayor, do you have a plan for a parade in twenty twenty-three?
I don't as of now, Tony. I mean, I'd like to, but.
That's, no, that's, that's fine. There is no, there is no plan at the moment, so you wouldn't wanna budget anything for it.
I mean, I'd like to, but it just, you know, see how the year goes, and I didn't wanna, uh, pre-plan for a parade.
And we have all the expenses we need to take care of before jumping to that. And we could always.
All right, line one forty-four. So this is, is not an unreasonable amount, but travel expenses, line one forty-four, have gone up in twenty twenty-two and are, um, projected to go down a little bit in twenty twenty-three, but still high, much more than, than years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
We didn't seek anything in twenty twenty, twenty-one or twenty nineteen, I believe.
Okay. Does, does this ten thousand projected for twenty twenty-three more in line with a non-COVID year in the past, or we have a, a change in philosophy? Again, I don't think it's too much money. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
I don't think, I don't think any, any of our previous mayors traveled to go, or anybody traveled to go out and get outside money. I mean, I think, if we're gonna go out to get outside money, we need to be there.
Well, and, and I'd just like to know a discussion on, again, I'm not opposed to it. I'm, I'm, I don't ask to change it. I'd just like to know what type of travel might we be doing. And, and you've done a great job of, uh, I'm referring to it as dollar for dollar. You've done a great job of that.
Thank you.
I wanna give you the tools to continue that.
Yes, sir.
So is that, that's out-of-state travel, or it's in-state travel, or?
I think we just moved it all together, cuz there'll be some out-of-state travel.
Okay.
Like, you know, where we have some meetings in February coming up, lined up with Congressman Scalise and Congress, I think, like, all three, as a matter of fact, Kennedy, Cassidy, and Scalise, to get up there and start talking about.
Mostly to DC?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To talk about FEMA reimbursement and what's, why they're dragging their feet so long, and even the legislation that they're putting in place for vendors to start allowing, to put interest on their, their, uh, their bills as FEMA starts slow-playing them and, uh, and make that a new line item. So it's just like, it's all, there's a big bill in place right now. I don't, I think you'll see it statewide as well, that we'd like to be a part of that because we get hamstring, like, as being a small city with a six million dollar budget, when we actually step out to do the right thing. And, and what happens in the cities when you get, it's one of them things where you get punished for doing the right thing. And we kinda really, in lack of a better word, frustrated with it. Because I, I think that I'm one of the very few cities that do, and, and one of the very few cities that really got hammered down on it. But, you know, and we traveled to Baton Rouge, I'll be in committee next week with, with Senator Almon, because, you know, he has some of the same concerns we are, and if we can have an incredible voice in Baton Rouge, you know, speaking the same language, it, it seems to resonate a little squeakier.
Again, I applaud you for all of your efforts in this regard. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
I think, I think better than any previous mayor, and, and you need recognition for that.
Thank you.
Uh, line one ninety-eight, police department miscellaneous revenue, the, uh, the twenty-three budget of forty-two thousand is, uh, higher than the amended, uh, proposed amended twenty-two budget, and thirty percent higher than, um, no, almost two hundred percent higher than the original budget, which is all good news. Uh, just a question for, uh, Todd, what is the source of that money?
Sure, Mr. Buddy. So, so the source of that money is the agreement that the police department entered into with Jefferson Parish School Board for reimbursement of the officer on campus at the, at the school. So we have five months budgeted in twenty twenty-two, seven months budgeted in twenty twenty-three. We did not budget a full year next year. Uh, it's a twelve-month agreement with some extensions. Again, we're being conservative. Um, so that's, that's what makes up that, that number, Mr. Buddy.
Do we have a, we're, we're supplying a, a police officer?
That's my understanding. All I, all I know is, is from what I've seen the, in the agreement.
Okay.
I have a copy of that agreement, if you'd like to see it.
No, I'm good. I'm good. I was curious where the money was coming from.
Just for the mayor's benefit and, and the councils, we have reached out to the, to the school board today on a process for us to get reimbursed. So we're putting that kinda process in place.
You mentioned that you were gonna look into that. Thank you. So, um, an item that may need a bump, but something that you, you may be happy with, line two forty-three, which is electric utilities.
Is that what's in your six today?
Um, the twenty twenty-two amended budget is ten K, and the twenty-three budget is ten K. Not a lot of money, but I would think utility costs have gone up more at the end of twenty twenty-two. So we may see a higher expense in twenty twenty-three. Um, so you may wanna look at that. Line two forty-seven, again, in the police department budget, police vehicles. And I'm assuming this is a maintenance cost. Whoops. Nope, wrong line. I've got a bad line number here. It's, uh, two forty-six. So.
Right?
We spent, um, well, if we amend the twenty twenty-two budget as planned, it'll be thirty-seven thousand dollars, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred, and we're only projecting twenty-five thousand for twenty twenty-three. Um, that may be a little, a little light. The, uh, the salary cost is, it's expected to increase over the, the twenty twenty-two original budget by sixty-four thousand, and over the twenty twenty-two amended budget proposal by seventy-six thousand. Now, if we assume that two percent of that is police officer raises, which again should come out of that fund. But anyway, I'm curious as to why, what, what generates that sixty-four thousand or seventy-six thousand dollar increase, depending on what number you compare it to.
Let me, so I'll, I'll need to get back to you on that, Mr. Buddy, but we did work with Samantha, who processes payroll on these payroll estimates. Um, I just need to go back to the schedule that she prepared, and I don't have it on me. Uh, but she did prepare a schedule, and that's kinda what we base these numbers off of. We, and we do have a list of names and/or positions. Uh, so I'll take a look at that, and, and I'll have to get back to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just speaking of salaries, Mr. Buddy, what I'll say is that none of these projections would include the ordinance that is up for approval at the end of the month to increase salaries for all the elected officials across the board.
That would be correct.
Right?
Right. Well, I'm in the police department right now, but thank you for pointing that out, Tim.
Yeah, there, there's a salary.
Yeah, there's a salary, there's a salary error that's also.
Correct. Correct. Thank you. Line 264, still in the Police Department, annual leave. The, the proposed 2022 amended budget is 37,000. And we're proposing 50,000 for the 2023 budget. Is, is that a number that was also generated?
So the 20.
I know we added a payroll, I mean, a vacation.
So the 2022 projection frankly will, will need to change because turnover has occurred in the last week, two weeks, three weeks since we prepared this information. So the 2022 amended amount at the time was based on one or two folks where we paid annual leave in early November or in November. I believe there's been additional turnover in the Police Department that will cause the 2022 number for annual leave pay to increase. The 2023 number.
Chief, is that, is that correct? You lost some more guys this month, beginning of this month? Okay. And you anticipate any more that you know of?
Possibly one.
So what's your total force right now? You don't know how many guys you got?
But that's okay.
Well, that's a.
Yeah.
It's, it's related to turnover, so it's, it's, it's a moving target.
Yeah, the annual leave for 2023 is a, is a, you know, that's a, it's certainly an estimate, Mr. Buddy. We don't know which officers are going to.
I understand.
Leave or how many in, in 2023.
And that was that fund that we created and didn't really create.
Correct.
So holiday pay in line 265. The original 22 budget was 101,000 rounding. The amended budget is looking at 32,000. 2021, it was 71,000. So there may be some coding changes or corrections that were made, or maybe we need to make some corrections. It was a.
An increase in holiday pay?
Yes.
I think that's because of the new holiday that was adopted. Was that not?
But.
That was not, so I think he's asking about 2022.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm reflecting on 2022 to come to the 2023 budget number of 101,000.
I'll need to look at that, Mr. Buddy, and.
Yeah.
Get an answer to you.
I know we increased one day. But 2022 is potentially, maybe there was some mis, miscounting of charges in there. But that's from 2022's proposed amended budget of 32,000 to 100,000. It probably accounts for something other than increasing the number of holidays by one.
Yeah. Agreed.
If you would look at that. So line 267. Police retirement match. The original 2022 budget was 302,000. Projected, the amended, proposed amended 2022 budget is 268,000. And we're projecting 302,000 for 2023. So that's a $34,000 increase over the proposed amended 2022 budget, over 12%. Again, I don't know where the projections are coming from. It does, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be rational if the 2022 amended number is fairly accurate.
That's an estimate for 2023, Mr. Buddy. I'll, I'll have to refine that. We can refine that as needed.
So my comments on line 291 in the Fire Department, we discussed significantly. We don't have to readdress it. Line 319. 319. Is that still, yeah, that's the Fire Department. So vehicle repairs and maintenance are projected to hold flat over the, comparing it to what we're going to look at for amending the 2022 budget of 40,000. And they're compared to, to hold flat. And I would think with, well, we only have one new fire truck. The other one's years out.
So I'm just assuming.
Two new vehicles.
Yeah, but I'm assuming some of the big trucks, I don't even know what they call squad trucks and all this, they plan on rebuilding one of them units.
But it wouldn't come out of.
I don't know that answer.
I would think it would come out. It would come out of that capital fund use, probably. So anyway, it. With two new vehicles and, I mean, the logic was when we bought two new trucks. Right. So we may have, we may have an extra 10 or 20,000 realistically available there.
But y'all still have that.
We still do have it. It's just not used as much.
I thought we were going to replace them.
We did. I mean.
We haven't replaced that pickup truck yet. We can always use an extra.
I understand.
Everybody uses extra trucks.
Line 326, small equipment. So. This number went up from our original 2022 budget of 23,000.
What line?
I'm sorry. Let's see here. It is 326. The original budget, line I, was 23,000. Our, we're looking at amending that to 48,000. So we've obviously spent the money. And then we're going to 50,000 for 2023. I don't know the nature of these items. They're probably not something that would come out of that capital fund. So I'm just, I'm just, I'm a pass on that comment entirely.
It could come out of that capital fund.
It could. You know, we don't need to be accounting for it in two different places.
Come out of either one.
Yeah. So the amount of money in the capital lease on line 329 is 54,629. That's probably the number, that's the number we used back in August. Todd picked up the same number for 2023. And, and listening to Todd Saint Seer, it may be more than that, but I don't think we can change it at this point in time.
I don't think they're going to take another guess. I mean.
Sir?
So fluctuate. It could be a little more, a lot more. You don't know where it's going to be depending on what's the financing deal you make.
And, and the cost.
Finances went up.
Yeah. Well, we know the cost of money went up and we know the cost of the truck went up. So we're going to, just going to pass. So we have under salaries, line 332. There were adjustments made in, in 2022. So my comments, I'm going to use 2021 as a base year because I don't believe there were any raises. So we, we are proposing to increase in, in line item 332. We're proposing to increase $166,000 over the 533,000 for salaries. And of course, there's all the related costs that go with that. And so I'm not sure how the 699 projected for, for 2023, where it came from. But we also have a new line item, which is salaries other. And it's 207,000. Let me back up again to, to line item 332. We're now showing the proposed 2023 budget of 699. Whereas the schedules we used five months ago, Todd's schedule, show that it 681,000. So there's a $18,000 bump there that we didn't talk about five months ago. I don't know what's changing here. And then we've got salaries other. We didn't have previously. Todd's schedules we reviewed and used five months ago did have $186,000. I'm not sure what salaries others reflect. We may have discussed it five months ago.
So salaries other, if you go down two more lines to 335, it's a recoding of scheduled overtime pay to salaries other, just the way it's shown on the paychecks. That was actually something that Todd St. Seer discussed with Todd T. and Scott Stansbury about reflecting it more properly on the paycheck.
I do sort of recall that conversation. Thank you for reminding me. So it is up to proposed in 2023 of 207. Five months ago, we were looking at 186,000. So that, the. So that's just a, a point of information. I, I don't know where the salary projections are coming from, but it's more than what we talked about five months ago. And I do, I did have a question about the overtime pay. It actually went down. So that would be, explain why. No, I'm sorry. Line 335. Scheduled overtime is 88,370 in the amended 2022 budget and 88,370 in the, in the 2023 budget. And as I understand, scheduled overtime, that's the overtime.
There's nothing in the 2023 budget.
Uh, but scheduled overtime?
We assume because of the new hire.
Row 335. It's basically, so that budget moved to row 333, salaries other.
The wrong column. Thank you. Okay. Jumping to line 354, garbage fees. Our 2022 budget was 386,000. We amended the budget and projected it to go to 455. I'm sorry. We're planning on amending it to go to 455 for '22 and 475 for '23. So a, a couple of questions. And, and Mayor, I think I know what the answers are and Todd, but we budgeted 386,000 for 2022, then we amended it. I guess back in July to 455. So, and then we're going to amend it again in '23 to 475. What are the, what are the changes? Because we had a contract. So I think you've.
This is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right. This is the revenue side and the, and the mayor and the council, I think, approved an increase in the fee during the year.
Thank you.
And the increase to 475 is a, it's a full year impact of the fee. It's probably going to be more than that. But this is a conservative estimate of.
Thank you.
Kind of what, what the revenue number would be. And row 358 is the, is the expense line item. And that does have an increase, Mr. Buddy, and, and that similar explanation, I think we have an increase in the fee charged by the garbage contractor.
Because in the contract, he can increase by CPI and it was.
So was the CPI increased?
Yep.
Since we're there on the garbage fee, can you tell me, Mr. Attorney Allen, to what extent we're subsidizing garbage collection with the general fund?
Councilman Esposito, could you repeat that please? I didn't hear.
To what extent is the general fund subsidizing garbage collection outside of fees that are collected for, for both the taxes? Is that reflected on here or do I just need to do the math?
No, it's, I, I can.
If I need, I mean, I can.
No, I can talk you through it. So the revenues that we estimate in column H for the 2022 year is 734,000. And the expenses we estimate are 716,000. So at this, at these amounts, we estimate we'll collect about 18,000, 17,000 more dollars than our cost. And that's an estimate, but that's where we project.
Got you.
And we project the 2023 amounts to be basically break even. And again, that's an estimate.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to be rebidding the contract too, so that we may see an increase.
Yep.
In, in costs in 2023.
Yep.
And we may have to address the fees in 2023 also.
Yep.
Line 537. Salaries.
537.
537. Yes, sir. Salaries, regulatory. Salaries, regulatory. Our, our budget last year going into 2022 was 75,000. We're projecting to amend that, assuming we adopt that, these proposed numbers to 81,000. And in 2023, we're projecting to approve 125,000. So if somebody could just walk me through the ink, the change from
We did.
from 2022 amended to 2023.
Just Molly. Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
So you have one new employee this year, Ms.
Molly McGee.
Molly. When did she start, do we know, ish?
Couple of months ago.
Yeah, a couple of months ago. Yeah, around August.
Okay, so she's here about half a year ish?
About half a year.
And that's a, that's a $45,000 increase from this year over next year. What's, that's
I'll have to look at that.
I mean, is she, is she going to be a $90,000 employee, I guess is the question?
Not that I'm aware of, but let me look at the worksheet and the schedule and we can send something out.
625. I mean, she's got a floodplain management certification. She's got a CBO certification.
So Molly, Molly alone doesn't explain it. I don't think.
We have a
You have a schedule.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a schedule. I just don't have it in front of me. Yes.
That's fine. Okay.
Hey, that department should see an increase in revenue just with all of the new builds. And everything, it should easily cover that. And Molly will also be trained onto electric inspections, so we won't have to outsource those electrical inspections as much anymore as well.
And let me say this, that my limited interaction with Molly is she's, she's doing a great job. So
She's an asset.
Yeah, I think she is. My next question, we've already discussed, and it was the, the increase in court revenue. We talked about that being primarily a projection in, in traffic ticket collection. Streetlights, line 678. Whoops.
Nope.
Bad reference.
578.
578.
Nope.
Nope, let's see.
So I think we need to go through and count all the streetlights. Because a lot of streetlights were knocked down by ITA. They're knocked back up. They're still paying for them.
Streetlights on 618.
Yep, 615 or 621.
I think it's time that we start going through everything. I'm with you. And let's start looking at even what's going with the playground and throughout the city. So let me ask you a question. Is that power meter? Streetlights. How do you bill some of those?
Separate, separate for like, so we paying for X amount of lights?
Would it be even more efficient?
Or the hurricane, some fell down. Well, they come in, throw a pole back up, put all the power lines back up.
And the lights.
And they don't put the streetlights back. Nobody ever comes back around. So I called Patrick and gave him a list of a few that I know for sure.
Like half of River Road.
Yeah, River Road, you got a big section that had lights before that don't now. Yeah, great, about apartments, none of them replaced. Now about apartments, I'll tell you, a lot of them lights that shine back at the apartments, that's on apartment owners. That's not on us.
Wait, what's that?
Them floodlights that shine back? Yeah, we shouldn't be.
Not if they're hanging on their building.
They would put up, a prime administration put them in.
I know the story.
I had them, we refinanced them, who were paying the car. But they were down 200,000. They would never replace them.
I know.
Paying for that too.
We already had that call in because we were paying for a bunch of the playground that aren't there.
So Todd, that line
So we're trying to fight them to get
17.
Couple hundred.
618.
Yep.
Is a revenue line. And it says streetlights. How does that work?
It says revenues. That's a, that's a typo, Mr. Buddy.
It's an expense, right?
You don't work in them.
That's a
Yeah, okay. Well, that makes sense.
My apologies.
He's the first guy that admitted.
That's fine. So
Any account, not that you need to get into this level of detail, Mr. Buddy, but if the first number in the account code is a four, that's an expense. If it's a three, it's a, it's a revenue item. So that's, that's a typo.
Yeah, okay.
I'll fix that.
I thought it was at first and then I just looked at it and I said, maybe I read it wrong. Maybe my notes are wrong. Anyway, we, we had a, again, a 2022 amended budget of 143,000 and a 2020, 2023 proposed budget of 147,000. And with the, again, duplicate comment with the big increase in utilities in the last five or six months. We don't have a whole, a full year of that big bump in utility costs. So your utility expenses for 2023 may be a little shy. Okay.
We can take a look at that, Mr. Buddy.
We talked about the HFD sales tax fund. Don't have to repeat any of that. The FEMA fund emergency on line 699. I know you touched on it very briefly in Councilman Asbou. I'm sorry, 699 is bad reference, I believe.
That's where the FEMA fund is.
So I, I do have a question about line 704. The, my question is, we're showing revenue there for 2022. So that means that 289 has come in and it's been spent, right?
So we, so we did receive reimbursements from FEMA for ITA, yes, 200,000. No, this is ITA.
Next line down.
It's just FEMA.
Zeta zero. The Zeta fund is
Oh, just as FEMA. Okay, this is ITA, all right. And that's received.
Yes.
Hallelujah.
Well, that's, so that's received and spent, right?
And spent.
Because it's come, it's
And spent.
That would also, if it just was received, it would still be deferred, right?
Correct. It's a, it's a reimbursement, correct.
So that 289 was spent to the general fund, to reimburse the general fund?
No.
No, how was?
That was a reimbursement for, I don't know exactly which PWs, but for money that we already spent a year ago or in the cleanup or at some point previously.
So I guess my question is, is this a, I thought this was a council restricted fund. And I don't recall spending any FEMA funds, is I guess is the question.
So the $3 million the city has spent since ITA hit are all FEMA, FEMA-related expenditures. Paid out of the general fund because the FEMA fund had zero cash.
So we need to replenish that.
But it's tracked, correct. But it's tracked in the FEMA fund. But it's tracked in the, in the FEMA fund. That's where these expenses are recorded. They are not expenses of the general fund.
But we only show, well, the schedule only reflects 527,000 of expenses, FEMA expenses.
Yes.
So it's not the big picture. How, how does the big picture get reflected here a dozen?
So the big picture is that
In other words, we spent 3 million, four or five.
Correct. Correct.
And part of that was the $2 million loan.
Most of that was in the, in the prior year.
But it's a fund balance. Okay. So the 527,000 that's shown here, would that reflect the items we discussed at the previous council meeting?
That's all
Being the unpaid FEMA bills?
Correct.
So, so we got, we got 289,000 here that we could have, have used for that. Instead, we approved the borrowed money, I think.
So, so I guess that my question is, will you show a transfer in from the capital fund as revenue? How is that going to be reflected into this?
So So I'm not sure the FEMA impacts the, the capital project fund, or at least in this specific case.
We borrowed money at the last council meeting, right? Is that where you go on, Councilman?
What, what question? Are we talking about the revenue or the, the 500 of expense or?
The revenue.
Yeah, so let's go back to the revenue. The revenue was a direct revenue from FEMA, right?
Correct.
And that
And then we borrowed money at the last council meeting to pay some of these bills. So
Correct.
At the, should that money be reflected in here as a, as a revenue? And then also below the line under FEMA expenses?
So those
For the payable, in fact?
So those are loans between the funds, not revenue and expense transactions or, or permanent transfers. So that's why, that, that's why you don't see them here. But yes, on the November, trying to get my I don't know if, if it happened in November or not. I lose track of my dates. The, the last
It would have been November.
Yeah. So, so that might be a November transaction once we close out November.
But it wouldn't hit the schedule anyway.
It would not hit this schedule because it's not a revenue or an expense item.
So if you use that money from the capital fund to pay bills, how would you reflect it on this schedule? Because now you, it'd just be a, it, I guess it would increase the negative number.
So it doesn't get reflected on this schedule because that's just a loan between the funds.
The actual payment of the expenses.
Well, the payment of the, of the expenses
The portion from the loan.
No, because all of the expenses are already recorded. This, the 600,000 and change of outstanding bills, again, I don't, I don't have the exact list in front of me, but I would bet 500,000 of them are these current, 527, 765.
When you pay those?
Right.
When you pay those payables?
Yep.
Wouldn't this number go down?
No. No, it's still an expense. So the payable would go down because the bills are paid and we no longer have that liability.
So this doesn't reflect unpaid expenses. It reflects something else.
This is the, the costing curve for work performed during the 2022 year.
So we, we paid in 2022, 526,000 of ITA-related expenses.
We didn't pay, we incurred those costs. People did the work. We didn't pay them. We still owe them, that's
It's an encumbered bill. Yeah, and so I'm, I'm, I'm following you partially, but not fully.
Okay.
This reflects FEMA expenses either, I heard, I thought I heard two different things. Either paid in 2022 or incurred in 2022.
It's incurred. The work was done in 2022 or the services provided. They may or may not have been paid. And the total list of unpaid is still the 600,000 and change that we presented to the council last week or the week before.
Okay, so I guess what's, my question is
When does it ever go away?
Since the fund was not created in 2021, is that why we don't have a 2021 expense in that fund? Because we obviously have expenses from 2021.
No, so that, that's a good catch. This actually needs to be updated.
Because I mean, we should be over $3 million in expenses, right?
Because I'm looking at the 2023 ending balance of 238,000 negative.
No, the 2021 ending balance was negative 3 million.
Right.
So negative what?
3 million and, and change. That needs to be edited.
And that would then change Schedule M's ending balance?
Only the ending balance, not the activity.
Right, right.
But yes, it would make the, the ending balance
That's going to go to north of $3.5 million.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So we talked about my next OPA fund. 715 to 729.
So that's 2022 budget, Mr. Buddy, is that agreement that's on the agenda for approval at, at next week's meeting, at the next meeting? And we have no amounts in the budget for 2023.
That's what I'm, I'm a little confused about.
Again, we don't have 2021's numbers.
Well, we had zero 2021 because
Okay.
Because, because it didn't impact the income statement.
Well, I'm, I'm just a little confused about how we're projecting expenses here on future ordinances, but we're not doing it in other areas of the budget, such as the raises on the elected officials and things like that.
Maybe it's an error. I mean, I can fix whatever you need us to fix.
So
I can remove it. I'll be happy to remove it. That's fine.
I'm sorry, remove what?
The, the 3, 327, since it's not approved by the, by the council yet. That's fine.
Well, what I'm, what I'm confused is, along the same topic, so maybe conclude all at once. Where's the 3.4 million?
It's in cash.
Okay, you mentioned it.
In the bank. And it's deferred revenue. It's not recognized until it's spent.
Confusing to me, but
And that's why you have him?
Yeah. I mean, I understand why when you explain it, it's still confusing.
It is.
Because it's not reoccurring revenue. If it was reoccurring revenue, it would show.
Probably, yes. Yes.
So the
Might give it to us next year again.
No, that's unlikely to happen.
So the OPA revenue we're recognizing here on line 720. What is the source of that 327,000?
That's what, as Jason asked the question
That's the expenditure for
Can be removed since this ordinance is not approved by the, by the council yet. So really that should
What is, what is the source, what is the, the subject of that 327 again?
That's the improvement
Thank you. That was it. Yes. I couldn't remember. We're stationed.
But I understand what Jason's saying. Some spots we, ordinance that are ready, they're just not
And that's fine. So this can be removed. Remove it.
We'll put on next.
That's fine. The, the somewhat issue and perhaps maybe why I did include it is with that 5% budget law, in the other funds, if we don't include the raises, A, that's a 2023 transaction. But I don't think not making any of those other edits will impact the compliance with the budget law. If we don't approve this, we'll have well, I guess you would approve
You could leave that there.
Just
He can cut that check as soon as we approve that.
Yeah, never mind. Disregard. When the council approves it at the December meeting, that'll be fine. Yeah, that's fine.
You know what I'm saying? Jeff's, the parish is paying that? We're paying half. I think the plan was for us to cut the check to them. Do you know if that, is that what we talked?
Yeah, no, we're working on their, we are, we are partnering with them. We have a CEA with the parish to partner with them to pay
So I think we're supposed to cut that check.
It may go directly to BOD or the parish, but it, but it's going to be coded.
The parish is preparing the CEA.
It, we already have it.
You have it already?
Yes, sir.
Well, that'll, yeah, that'll tell you where who's paying, who, it should.
It's basically just a CEA of us partnering with them. Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, I don't mind to you. We have that signed. I have it. It's just, all right, so let me take, it's not as
As soon as we approve it
As soon as we approve it, we'll send them to CEA.
We'll sign it and he can cut the check.
All right. Can we spend just a couple of minutes, Todd, discussing? And maybe you can walk us through the sewer fund, line 918 to 943.
Anything specific, Mr. Buddy, on 2022 or 2023?
I think, I think I know the answer to this question. I'm going to ask the question. I think I know the answer. Cash is not shown on here, correct?
Correct.
So we're projecting that the sewer fund balance will grow if we adopt this budget and hit it, the 2023 budget. It'll grow from 3,129 to 3,129,000. It'll grow from three million, one twenty-nine to three million, two eighty-three. It'll grow by approximately ninety thousand dollars.
That's our estimate, yes.
And that growth is, and this is before Veolia adjustments, that growth is because, can we tell from looking at this? Because we're making, we're, we're cash positive, i.e.
It's a decrease.
Do we know where that ninety thousand comes from?
It's a, it's a decrease in the sewer repairs. I think we, I think we had some specific sewer repairs that we did this year that, that the mayor and Brian are working on reimbursement from the state or other grants to, to fund those amounts. That's, that's really the difference between the two years.
There is on line. An increase in cost on line nine twenty-three of seventy thousand. Nope, not, I'm sorry, it's not. Hardly any increase at all.
It's mostly in line nine twenty-five, where, where we incurred costs in twenty-twenty-two that were non-reoccurring and not budgeted for twenty-twenty-three.
In line nine twenty-five, sewer repairs, line slash stations? No, that's, that's almost a standstill to our amended twenty-twenty-two proposed budget, three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So what line were you referring to? I may be looking at it wrong, nine twenty-five?
Nine twenty-five, five fifty-four.
Right.
Line nine twenty-five. Okay, thank you. Yep. Those are my comments, guys. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Buddy. Excellent feedback. We'll work on some of these answers, and we'll send these out to the council and the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to take care of some of the big items at the meeting in December, if possible, including the, the sewer fund, the operation of that fund with the Veolia contract cancellation. I'm assuming that's been canceled because we're past December first now. I'd like to try to work some of those into a, a floor amendment so that we can kind of get that budget as close as possible to figure out what the savings is, if possible. And then there are some other items on the, you know, the fire sales tax fund, operating the general fund, capital fund, all that. I'd like to get some of that worked out. Hopefully, we can get it worked out before the meeting to propose as, as a floor amendment. No further discussion for you?
Question for the mayor, you've, you've executed a termination agreement with Veolia?
We're done, yes, sir.
Wonderful. Good job, thank you.
Well, I thought you meant smell shit. I thought you were smelling it already.
Especially when I was back, especially when I ran the sewer plan Friday, Saturday, something, yeah.
Move to adjourn.
All right, motion by Councilman Asbilly to adjourn. Second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
Five yeas, zero nays, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.